There was just a blank wall.
George, 10 seconds.
10 seconds.
Yeah, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Wait, James.
Marcus. Just wait one second. All set, Mark?
Yeah.
All right, all right. Now we're ready.
James, now they're ready.
And welcome. Okay, we're going to call to order the regular city council meeting of June 13th, 2022. Madam Clerk, the role please.
Bixson?
Here.
Salvia?
Here.
Albrecht?
Here.
Gould?
Here.
Harrison?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Sage?
Here. Thank you. Would you now please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight, this beautiful night. I think it's going to get a little warmer on Wednesday, but that's what happens with the summer. First, before we get started, I'd like to just announce the passing of Lucy Strand. Lucy was a member of our community for a long time, and she was the original person, city representative to the OPC board, and she served on there almost 30 years, was involved in a lot of charities and things, and she and Clarence, her husband, were awfully nice people. Just on a personal note, I'd like to say I served with her for a number of years, and she did a great job there, and sometimes it wasn't, as with a lot of boards, sometimes it wasn't all peaches and cream over there, and she always stood up for, I believe, what was right in what was Rochester. So we will miss her, and condolences to her husband Clarence. So I thought we'd just have a brief moment of silence for Lucy tonight. Thank you. So first, we have public comments, scheduled and non-scheduled. Is there anybody who'd like to say anything tonight in the audience that's not on the agenda? Brian, is there anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am not seeing any public comment.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes as a consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 23rd, 2022.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Albrecht. Madam Clerk, the role please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes. Thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. First is a consideration of a resolution to designate a director of Public Services and Economic Development as street administrator for the city of Rochester. Next is a consideration of special event application from Bethesda Church to hold Bethesda Heat Cry uplifting music event in the park on Friday, July 8th. Next is a consideration of a special event application from Julie Massanova to hold One Bike for Paul Bike Ride event on Sunday, August 8th, in the municipal park and the Paint Creek Trail. Next is a consideration of special event application from the Rochester Pride Committee and the First Congregational Church to hold the Rochester Pride 2022 event on June 19th in the municipal park with a march downtown. Next, a consideration of a special event application from the Rochester PSD to hold the Rochester Pose event on Thursday, October 6th downtown. And finally, is a review of the current special event calendar.
Motion to approve as presented.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead. Okay, oh, Mr. Sage, you had something you wanted to add?
I did. For consideration, a special event to be planned on July 4th in the band shell. The Crossroads of America Scout Band would like to perform a patriotic session of songs at that day. I'd like to add this to the consent agenda contingent upon their successful application of the special event.
Support.
Okay, is, Councilmember Peterson, are you okay with that?
That's fine. I spoke with the city manager this morning.
Okay, so, motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Councilmember Albrecht. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the role please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes. Thank you. Next, there is no old business in table items. There are no public hearings. There's no legislative deliberation. Reports on regular business. First is a consideration request from the Fire Department to purchase 25 replacement air pack bottles. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, the chief's going to come up here and explain our situation here. I know someone reached out to us anonymously, we'll call it, just wondering about making sure we have all the proper equipment at all times, and I talked to the chief about it, why we're on this replacement schedule, so I asked him if he would spend a few minutes just to bring us up to date.
Chief, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. As you know, firefighters use self-contained breathing apparatus to go inside structures to protect themselves when they're in an IDLH atmosphere, immediately dangerous to life and health. Our packs are made by Scott, and we use a cylinder filled with air that's of carbon fiber. The carbon fiber tanks have a lifespan of 10 years. Our lifespan will come to an end around November, the 1st of December of this upcoming year. Every year, we send the packs out, and they're physically tested and certified, so the packs that use the air bottles are checked and certified on an annual basis. What this request is in front of you is to replace half of our bottles, of 20 bottles. We do have a grant in the system right now to replace not only the packs, but the bottles. The request that I have in front of you was planned into this year's budget. I have a remainder of the 20 bottles in next year's budget, should we not get the grant. So what I'm asking to is, in essence, we'll have a little insurance policy to go ahead and make sure that we have fresh bottles available. If we don't get the grant in time, then we can go ahead and purchase the other bottles. And if we do get the grant late in the grant season, then we would go ahead and spend money on the replacement of the air packs. If we don't get the grant, the air packs will still be recertified on an annual basis, but we cannot recertify the bottles after 10 years. So I'm requesting council's consideration to move for replacement of half of the bottles for the requested sum that's in front of you now. It is contained within this year's budget.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Chief, you said a number. It says on the request, 25 replacements, so is that half of, so we really need 50 overall?
So there's 20 air packs. With that, we're replacing the three specialty bottles that we have for firefighter rescue should a firefighter get trapped. These are a little bit bigger bottles that we would attach onto a special piece of equipment. And then for confined space rescue, there are smaller packs because of confined space. So because those are specialty bottles, I'm going to replace those with this first group. So that's why you see the 25. 20 of the regulars, three of the ripped, and two of the rescue bottles.
So you'll need another 20 at some point in the near future, too?
Sometime into next year's budget.
Okay.
I'm guessing around August or beginning of September, if we don't get the grant, I'll be back in front of you to request to spend the money that we have in the upcoming budget for this replacement, should we not get the grant.
Mayor, I'd like to make a, oh, go ahead. Mayor Proton.
Yeah, I just want to clarify. So the requested action in our packet on page 51 is for $30,895. But I thought I heard you say 25,000.
No, 25 cylinders.
Okay, 25 cylinders, okay.
Yeah, that's where I was.
I'm good.
You're both right. 25 cylinders for $30,000.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the funding for the air bottle replacement contained in the 2021 Fire Department budget in the amount of $30,895,077 to purchase 25 replacement cylinders.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht, support by Councilmember Peterson. Discussion, Councilmember Sage. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Chief, when will we know about the next tranche of grants?
Councilperson, I wish I had the answer for you. They'll start, they're finishing up their evaluation right now. We would anticipate hearing that they'll start releasing the money in June, and they may release it all the way up until September or October. So.
Would your intention be to come back to us and just fulfill the?
Yeah, the bottles are about a 10-week lead item, so if you think about it, about 10 weeks prior to December 1st, if we do not get the grant, I'll be back making another request to replace the remaining bottles.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Which we have included in the budget.
Very good. Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the role please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Thanks to council for your consideration.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief, you might want to stay there, Chief.
Next, we have a presentation regarding the dementia certification program from Beaumont Hospital. This presentation was made, I believe, at the DDA meeting, and it talks about how our Fire Department and Police Department handle people with dementia and talk about how our city can become a dementia-friendly city, and I think, you know, with the way things are and the population getting older, it's something we need to take a look at. So, Chief?
Thank you. Council, Sarah is here from Beaumont Health System. Just a little bit of information, as a reminder, about a year or so ago, we signed an agreement with Beaumont, and it was partly for doing some transports and education. The primary thing that we've been taking most advantage of right now is education, and Sarah and her team had put together a program on dementia. When we heard about this program, I talked with Chief Steve. We brought our firefighters and police officers together to go ahead and get trained on dementia. Dementia is, as I learned, is something that you can help manage people through who have dementia if you only know how to approach them. And it was a great eye-opening experience for Sarah to bring her team out. Actually, they put us into a lab, and they gave us things like gloves and different things that would disrupt our normal thought process of touching and feeling and everything, and said, this is how a dementia patient might feel or might hear. And all of these things now make us better emergency responders to go ahead and deal with our patients. With that, Sarah had talked about a program about dementia, and I'll call it Main Street. So I came to Kristy, and we talked to her a little bit, and she thought that was a good idea. We represented to the DDA. The DDA seemed to like it, and we felt that we wanted to bring it to City Council to go ahead and get your buy-in. And I'll kind of turn it over to Sarah, and then if Kristy has anything to add to it. But Sarah from Beaumont Systems.
Welcome, Sarah.
Thank you so much for having me. My name's Sarah. I'm a nurse. I work at Beaumont Troy, and my specialty is adult gerontology. So right now, I'm the geriatric program manager, and thankfully, I was invited to, by the chief, to do some education for their staff, and through that education, this idea of dementia-friendly America, I wanted to bring up to them, and then, of course, to you. So I'm going to give you some statistics, recent statistics. U.S. population, we know, is getting older. By 2030, one of every five people will be 65 and older, will actually outnumber those under the age of 18 by 2035. So that's a U.S. population statistic. For your current state here in Michigan, in Oakland County, in Oakland County, 25% of the population is over the age of 55, 17.5% are over the age of 65. We know that population is going to continue to grow by 2050. Again, by 2025, the number of Michiganders older than 65 will outnumber those under the age of 18. Our life expectancies are getting longer as well, so for Oakland County, we're looking about 80 and 1/2 years for the average life expectancy. So what do all those numbers mean in terms of current state for dementia? We know that as the population ages, the chance of having any form of dementia increases as well. We know usually by the time people are 85 and older, they have some type of dementia just because of their age. It might not even be diagnosed, but they have some signs and symptoms of that. 46% of those living with dementia and their caregivers actually have a fear of the stigma that's associated with the diagnosis. I like to tell people when they're first diagnosed, this is a disease, it's not a disgrace. It's okay, and we can help them as long as we know how to help them. So we really want to get rid of that stigma in terms of people being afraid to admit that they're dealing with the signs and symptoms that go along with caring for somebody that has dementia. 35% of those caregivers have sometimes hidden that dementia diagnosis from the person who has it. So with your community members, some of them might not realize what they're going through is actually something diagnosed because family doesn't want them to know because they might think that makes them a little bit worse. So they might not even know what they're dealing with. And then in Rochester alone, it was reported that 15% of the elderly population here in Rochester admit having difficulty remembering, which we know that's one of the things that's associated with dementia. Don't worry, if you forget where your keys are every once in a while, that's normal. But lots of people are having issues with remembering things. Some initiatives that come from the state of Michigan that support the Dementia Friendly America program. So in 2019 and 2020, our state plan goal from Governor Whitmer was to advocate for, inform, and empower those we serve in terms of those who are caring for people with chronic diseases, including dementia. So she actually, Governor Whitmer signed an application, and Michigan became an age-friendly state. We were one of five states in the nation to commit to becoming age-friendly. And then state plan goal number two is to help older adults maintain their health and independence by keeping them in their home and in their community. And to do that, it's providing caregiver support. Support of the informal caregiver, so family members, at-home caregivers who are caring for those with dementia. And so there's two programs here that I'm actually going to talk about, Dementia Friendly America and then Your Age Friendly America. And Dementia Friendly America is an initiative specific for dementia, so it kind of narrows down to this one chronic disease. It's a town or community that is informed, safe, and respectful of those who have dementia and their caregivers. So they have an understanding of what their caregivers are going through. They receive some education, and they change their practices to kind of be able to engage those people in the community. Age Friendly America comes from AARP and WHO. This is the broader form. This is another, just kind of label that a city can carry, but when you're looking at both of them and comparing them, they actually recommend working together. So if a city is going for either age-friendly or dementia-friendly, they recommend doing both together because the initiatives are very similar. So you can introduce one concept, you can have one committee, you can have one set of goals instead of going for one and then later saying, oh, we'd like to also add this one on. So I wanted to put that in for consideration. The other thing to mention is, for Dementia Friendly America, there are only two cities in the state of Michigan that are dementia-friendly, Saline and Grand Rapids. For age-friendly, you have a few more. So the closest one to us is Auburn Hills. I also believe Royal Oak is age-friendly, and then possibly Ferndale, but most of them are closer to the west side of the state. So here's a quick comparison. I already mentioned recommendation is for communities who are starting this to have both initiatives started from the outset. This can save time and money, you're reducing duplication and confusion. And so, and the AARP and WHO, and Dementia Friendly, recommend doing both together. There are several similarities in the objectives for both of them. So how can becoming a dementia-friendly community or age-friendly community benefit your area? So it allows those who contributed to the community to stay in the community. We know that a lot of our aging population, their, number one thing they're nervous about is getting out of their home, right? Not being able to stay in their home. And that's why providing education to the Fire Department and Police Department is really important because they're the ones responding and hopefully helping, not hopefully, but are, helping the caregivers and allowing people to stay in the community. Allow caregivers to feel comfortable living in this community. I've helped several families who have gone through the journey of dementia with their loved ones, and several of them had mentioned that after connecting with their police departments and giving their police departments their loved ones information, what's going on with them, they just had a better sense of relief, especially being able to sleep at night. I had one family who, her husband kept getting out at night, and he was very aggressive when he would get out, he was confused, and by working with the police department, she still went to look for him, but at least she knew that they knew he was aggressive and they knew how to handle him. So that really helped her. And so, of course, by doing those things, we improve the quality of life, not only for the person with dementia, but also the caregiver. So what steps does it take to get these two labels, as we'll call them? The number one step is convening a community team. So having a team of leaders, those who are part of bigger departments and maybe businesses in the area who would like to sit on the council and develop your initiatives. You would need to analyze what your community goals are, and then, of course, implementing the process. Now, if you're to go on the website, it says it takes about five years to implement this. I have been working with a gentleman who did dementia Saline, and they did it in about six months. And that's just because they had a community group that came together and say, this is what we're going to do, this is how we're going to do it, and they just did it. And to me, that seemed like a better plan because five years is a long time, and people are going to forget, and you guys are going to lose speed, you know?
Literally and figuratively, right?
Right, like, literally, exactly. So people might forget, so it really doesn't have to take that long. But like I said, Saline was able to do it in six months. Do you have a question? Oh, okay. So some examples of the community actions. So both of the dementia-friendly and age-friendly have objectives, and those objectives are broken down into different areas: transportation, business, healthcare, local fire and police, first responders. So these were some of the things that some of the different communities did. Education and training sessions for members of a specific faith community. So some of the churches got together, they held education for their church members regarding how to care for somebody with dementia. Collaborating with law enforcement regarding training and community initiatives. Some of the local restaurants offer dementia-friendly dinners or brunches, so that allows people who are caring for somebody with dementia, they can come, people will know what's going on and be able to respond to them better. And then some of the coffee shops did things like caregiver coffee hours, to where the caregiver could come in, maybe get a free cup of coffee, take a little bit of a break, and they could plan on those times. So those are just some of the examples of the community actions. These are two of the websites. The PowerPoint presentation is actually kind of a walkthrough of a dementia-friendly community, and then Dementia Friendly Saline, if you are interested in going, you could go to dementiafriendlysaline.org or dfsaline.org. He has a really nice website, and it gives you an idea of what Saline has done over the past couple of years. They actually decided to turn their community group into a nonprofit, so people can donate to Dementia Friendly Saline, and that allows them to actually do a lot of the education for the local businesses, cost-free to the business because they're a nonprofit. So that's just another avenue to take if you wanted to. So to summarize, forming a team is going to be the most important thing, outlining what your objectives are and implementing those, and then you do have to apply. So applying comes after you implement some of the objectives because your application is basically your story of what you've done. And so after you apply, if they approve your story, they do have lots of items for you to kind of promote that you're dementia-friendly. They have stickers for businesses, signs for businesses, different things like that that will show they're a dementia-friendly business or age-friendly business. And that's it.
Thank you, Sarah. So I just want to share some things that we've already done within the Fire Department, and based on Sarah's training, one of the things we have several patients that we see in some of the senior living, and we normally, when we go to certain rooms, we know we might have, or we're going to have some difficulty because the people tend to be aggressive. Well, we didn't know that dementia patients' vision is almost tunnel vision, it's more like this, and that if I was to come up on the side of you and reach for you or something, I would startle you. So then we were wondering, well, why did that patient swing out at us? They were just doing a natural reaction to it. So through the coaching of Sarah, we now know that when we go to those patients' rooms, we make sure that we come around to the very front of them. We stop, we'll introduce ourselves, we'll say hi, and all of a sudden, they'll start to communicate with us. We also learned a technique hand over hand to where we can make some contact and help direct the people. So we've already seen a huge change in the way we are treating our patients with more respect and getting much more cooperation on everything that goes with it. The other thing, Sarah told us a story, that people with dementia sometimes have some issues with depth procession, that they may come into your store, and you know the black vinyl mats at the front of your store where you go in and kick your shoes and wipe them off? Well, they see it maybe as a hole in the floor, and so they won't go by that, or they'll try to move around it. So we felt that dementia training that we received at the Police and Fire was critical, and because Rochester has always been an inclusive environment because of the way the council does things, we felt that this would just be another tool in the toolbox of keeping us open to all people, keeping our seniors in their homes, and being able to serve them better. And so having Sarah and her team helping us out was great. I'm not sure if Kristy has anything that she wants to add to it.
I can't.
You don't have to, Kristy. If you don't want to.
Yes, if you don't want to.
Just to mention, when Sarah came to speak at DDA, we talked about how we could get the businesses involved in all of this because it's super important. So we talked about our merchant fort meetings that are going to be coming back that we do in the evenings, having merchants come to that, but then Sarah also offered individual training for businesses that have a lot of employees, that she could go and do that training one-on-one, and I believe it's 45-minute sessions?
Yeah.
That they would need to be then certified, and then we can work with the graphics that we need to produce and provide to the businesses as well. DDA was super excited about it, many business owners there that said they would definitely want to participate, so we're excited to participate.
Good.
Mr. Mayor, are there any questions?
Mayor Proton, Salvia?
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for the presentation, really great information, and thank you, Chief, for taking this initiative. It's excellent. My question is, have you engaged with the OPC? You know, they are our local experts on aging, so how have you engaged with them?
I personally have not yet. It has been suggested to me, and I will reach out to them. I just, I personally have not yet.
Okay, well, if I can help in any way with that, I'd be happy to do so.
Councilmember Harrison?
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. That was actually my question as well, is to consider the OPC as well as the library, if the training can be extended to them as well, I'm sure they'd be receptive.
Councilmember Gould?
Thanks for the presentation. Who are you actually applying to? Is it the AARP, or like for DFA, there's nobody listed. Who makes that decision?
For Dementia Friendly America, they're their own organization. So you'd be applying to Dementia Friendly America, and then for Age Friendly America, it is through the AARP and WHO. So you're, but you're applying to Age Friendly America.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Sarah, for the presentation. Couple of questions, because I concede the benefits and the overlap between age-friendly and dementia-friendly programs. So my first question is, of the municipalities, as you listed, Saline, Grand Rapids, Auburn Hills, Royal Oak, Ferndale, are any of those dual-certified?
No.
Okay, are we going for dual certification, Chief?
But that would be my recommendation for talking with Sarah. Because there is overlap, and we almost get two bangs for the buck right here.
And I would be in full support of going for both programs. Thank you.
Councilmember Albrecht?
So what are the next steps? Are there costs involved? Are there, what do we need, what do you need from us tonight? Because I think, you know, this is a topic that I think has touched everyone in, you know, on this dais, and probably most of us in this room and listening, so what do we need to do to, you know, get it going? Because as the chief said, we want to be a, continue to be this friendly town that's welcoming to everyone, so this seems like motherhood and apple pie. We'd love to support it. What do we, what do you need from us?
So there is no cost to apply. The cost all comes from the development of your committee and your objectives, and then whatever the businesses or local departments decide to initiate. So there's actually no cost to apply or be part of your Dementia Friendly America or Age Friendly America. My suggestion would be to get your committee together. I know I've spoken to a couple of people from Rochester who are interested in participating. Please don't ask me their names right now because I don't remember. But there were about three people who were interested in being part of the committee. So once you get your committee together, whoever that might be, a couple of leaders, obviously, maybe people from Police and Fire or other businesses that would be interested, I'd be happy to be on that committee and kind of help guide from there forward.
Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
I would like to have administration move forward with putting together a plan for the education piece, to get started with the team and plan how they feel that would be best suited, and they would be the ones to know that.
And maybe come up with some, you know, some suggestions on how many people on the committee, maybe?
If it's okay with you, Mr. Mayor, I'll work with Sarah, and we'll put together kind of a draft committee, what it looks like. We'll talk to some people, if it's okay with you, to see who would like to volunteer. Clearly, if we were to talk to the library and the OPC, my guess is we'd probably get some commitment from there. And then sometimes committees don't need to be too big, but just big enough. So I'll work with Sarah to go ahead and put that together, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay with you.
Great, thank you. And then just report back to us when you have some progress. Mayor? Counselor Member Albrecht?
But Chief, I thought it was a great idea, and I'm thinking, you know, you could get somebody from the OPC, somebody from the library, somebody from DDA, you know, just so we get a nice cross-section from all the different committees to get this grassroots going and started, so.
Yes.
All right, well, Counselor Member Sage?
No, just to reiterate, with the intent to try and get both certifications correct.
All right, so we'll look forward to your report, Chief, and...
Thank you for your support, Council.
Yeah, and thank you for coming. Thank you. Thanks, Sarah.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, next is a introduction request for authorization to sign the letter of commitment to join the mental health co-responder program.
Chief's coming up.
Mr. Mayor, it's chief's coming up. How cool is this, that in this day and age, with a lot of stress on our public safety group, you get guys like this and groups like this, supported by groups like this, that take that next step? I think that says a lot about Rochester, and we're proud of both these guys for taking that initiative.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much. I am excited to bring this forward to you. Obviously, police response to the mental health crisis is something that's in the news and topical. And I think, you know, we've done an excellent job in our response, we've properly trained our people, but I think there's always ways to do better, and that's one of the things that's core to the core program, is to be able to have an embedded, specially-trained mental health professional that would be able to respond with officers and also provide the follow-up care. So basically, a little history on this. The departments of Auburn Hills, Bloomfield Township, and Birmingham formed together, along with Oakland County Community Health Network, and went out, obtained a grant, and started with one specially-trained clinician that is now embedded with those departments and responding to calls for service. And equally important is being able to provide after-care in a variety of situations to better serve the public, not only in that initial response, but after the fact. Getting resources to families and certainly improving the situations. So we have been working with those three departments, and now they have obtained another grant, which is an excess of $250,000 that will allow them to add a second clinician, and also to bring on the city of Rochester as a partner with the other three departments. So what we're asking today is the ability for us to sign a letter of commitment, which indicates that we would like to join this program. That is something that's required as part of the grant process. So the grant has been awarded, we're now going through the actual dispensing of the funds, if you will. And so this would allow us to send this to, along with the remaining grant applications, to indicate that Rochester is interested in becoming a partner in this initiative. And we would be looking forward to, at the fall, probably in September, where those monies would become available, and the second clinician could be hired, and we would then have a, basically, access to a social worker that would be embedded along with our officers. So I'd be sure we're going to answer any questions that you may have about the program.
Counselor Member Harrison?
Thank you, Chief. This is such an important program. I'm excited to see this presented before us tonight. I'm wondering, how long will the grant last, and what is the plan for when it expires?
So what we've done, this would last one year. They will continue to try to obtain funding. I've also worked with our finance staff to put a placeholder in case we didn't have grant funding, so that for future planning purposes, we have the monies set aside for that into the future, to be able to support the program. So we're planning for the future on kind of two paths. One is to continue to obtain grant funding, and then the second would be through budgetary planning in future budgets. One of the things we're also looking at is the opioid funds, and as a funding source. So we're exploring that, which is a substantial amount of money that's coming to all of these communities, and may be a funding source for the future as well.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Member Albrecht?
I just, you know, when I was reading the packet, Chief, just when you read the outcomes, you know, the graphs were great, but then the three examples from each of the communities where, you know, the, having the clinician there prevented something more serious happening. We all know, unfortunately, mental health is almost our newest pandemic going on right now. So being proactive, like we were with the dementia initiative we just heard about, and being able to get a clinician through this grant, I would fully support. Do we need a motion for this?
Yes.
So I would make a motion to author, to approve the city of Rochester to join the communities of Auburn Hills, Birmingham, Bloomfield Township, as part of this federal grant, for bringing on an additional clinician to take care of any incidents we have in our community.
Support.
Motion by Counselor Member Albrecht, support by Counselor Member Harrison. Discussion, Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you, thank you, Chief. As Counselor Member Albrecht said, we just can't do enough to help with mental health issues. So thank you for bringing this and participating in it. I fully support it. My question is, what about Oakland County? Does Oakland County, so Rochester Hills is serviced by Oakland County Sheriff, do they have a similar program?
Well, they actually have just hired a clinician that's assigned to Rochester Hills, Pontiac, and Independence Township. So that's just kind of jumping off right now. Other communities, such as Royal Oak and that, are looking at this, kind of trying to model this program. I know Troy is looking at it as well. The benefit that we have is we're joining a system that's up and operating. And so we are gaining from their experience, and I think that puts us in a much better position than, you know, we're trying to add a second clinician, where, you know, we have other agencies that are trying to use, spread somebody very thin. When you think of just Pontiac alone, I can't imagine one person managing that in Rochester Hills at the same time. So I think we've got ourselves in a very good position. We've got good partners, and I think it's certainly a great view of the future.
Counselor Member Peterson?
Yes, thank you, Chief. Great program. My question is, would we be able to utilize this with the schools as well?
Well, somewhat, yes. You know, the schools obviously have social workers. The social worker that's embedded in the program came from Rochester Community Schools. That's kind of was our hook, actually, because we kind of got her pointed in that direction. So, so yes and no. Yes, we wouldn't be, I don't know, competing is probably not the right word, but we would be working together with those social workers that are also in the schools.
Awesome.
Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Next is a consideration of agreement with the Michigan Municipal League for Workers' Compensation covered for fiscal year 2001, '22 through June 30, 2023. Mr. City Treasurer, Maggio, welcome.
Thank you, Council. So before you, we have issued a, we did an RFP to get a bid on the workers' comp premium for the city. We did our general liability in February this year, and then this was also a renewal, which is every July through June. We issued the RFP again. We received two responses and a cancellation. On the cancellation, it was a brief estimate, which was above these, and then when they said, are we in the ballpark? And no, they withdrew. So we have two bids left, and MML is the current provider. They're also the lowest one, and the budget decrease from what we had is $31,000 less than what we were anticipating. So with that, we're happy, and we're still looking at ways to keep that modifier to continue to go down, so that we can keep the premiums as low as possible.
Counselor Member Peterson?
I'll just make a motion that we approve, award our workman's comp bid to Michigan Municipal League for Fiscal Year, July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023.
Support.
Motion by Counselor Member Peterson, support by Mayor Protem Salvia. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes. Thank you. It's always easier when the price is a lot lower, right?
Yeah.
Next is a consideration of appointing a delegate and alternate representative to SEMCOG. Tonight, I'd like to appoint Mayor Protem Salvia as our delegate, and I'd like to nominate city manager to be our alternate, and if, and he can appoint somebody if he chooses to.
Okay.
Next is an agreement, is a consideration of agreement for...
Okay, thank you.
Do we need a motion, or?
No.
Okay. Next is consideration of an agreement for spongy moth evaluation and treatment. This is the old gypsy moth thing, but evidently, gypsy is, gypsy is not politically correct anymore. Alec, welcome.
Yeah, hi, Council. So earlier this spring, city staff got a RFP for services for evaluation and treatment of spongy moth. Staff reached out to try to research as many companies as we could. Only one firm responded back to the proposal, which is Biobase Pest Solutions, the same company that's been working with the city for, I believe, the past decade or so. So in your packet, you've got their proposal with their proposed pricing. It's the city, or staff request that city council approve this proposal, and have them come in this fall to do their first evaluation, to see what treatments are needed for next year. And I will tell you that evaluation from last fall showed that this year has a really low count for the spongy moth. So lots of the local area is showing low populations right now.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Member Peterson. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Member Albrecht. Discussion, Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and I know you tried to reach out to me earlier. Sorry, I missed the phone call, but I did see your email. And, so in your email, you referenced that Davy Tree Service is, is available to do this type of work. I'm just disappointed that there isn't anyone in the state of Michigan to do this. You know, we're contracting with someone in Pennsylvania, so I gotta believe the costs are higher, because there's, there's transportation costs there. So does Davy Tree do this service?
I believe they do, they do the treatment applications for us. So this, this firm is doing the actual kind of scientific evaluation of the population of spongy moth, and then we contract with Tree Services, the treatment application, whatever's recommended.
Well, do we need another evaluation? We have the evaluation. Can we just do a treatment this year?
I can help. So the moss moved up north, so there's a, it's the worst ever up north. It's defoliated a third of the, or the lower upper peninsula. So even though it's low here, once the inventory is done, this gentleman, this is a good question about being in the state, he comes in and does like 15 communities. So the cost for transportation is way down. So he comes in, does them in a cycle, and stays for like two weeks while he does the inventory. Having the knowledge of which trees are tagged in the city, he doesn't waste time looking for. We know which oaks to go to. You see the yellow tags on them. So he's extremely efficient. So I think that's why he's kept us as, for business, and kept it that way. But, so Davy only does the control. So up north, they're spraying with planes now, literally. It's the only way to get it, it's that big. Here, we put microorganisms up in the trees. It's a bacteria that eats versus spraying. You spray in an urban area, it gets over everything. It's, it's, you don't want your animals outside and things like that. So, so it seems we're lucky this year, but you have to stay on it every single fall. You have to inventory, because they can explode just like that. They go on three-year cycles, usually. We're in the low cycle right now, so if that helps.
So he does do treatments in other communities here in Michigan?
Investigations.
Investigations.
Yes, yes. He's like the local expert. Everybody seems to, he's had a really good track record identifying, so that we've been able to treat it, so.
Counselor Member Albrecht?
I just noted that it looks like, I was playing with my calculator, 7% increase over the next several years. To follow up on Mayor Protem's question, if this is just the assessment, do we need to do one every year, or could we do every other year?
Every year.
Okay.
They literally go to that same tree, go up and count. They use micro, binoculars and high-powered scopes to check the egg masses, and that's the indicator.
So when he does this assessment, then we go out and buy the solution, and Davy Tree or some provider, then, so you'll be coming back to us with that cost at some point?
If we need it, yeah.
Yeah, if it's...
Okay, thanks for clarifying those two points.
I mean, hopefully, we might not need it this year.
Correct.
Counselor Member Peterson?
Yes, I just know that last year, I know that Lapeer County did not spray, and it was a horrible mess. It was awful, and it coated everybody's homes and everything up there was really bad, so.
They did the plane spraying?
No, no, they didn't spray at all. So the moths just destroyed everything, and it was just horrible. They had to power wash almost everything up there. I had clients up there, so.
Yeah, the feces from them, it's like rain. You could hear it raining at midnight. It's horrible.
It's horrible.
The stores, the stores...
Unhealthy.
As well, yeah.
Yes.
On top of the...
It did, it stripped their trees, yeah.
Counselor Member Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Alec, we've done business with Biobase historically?
Fifteen years.
Okay, fifteen, so is it all...
The same gentleman, he's working on a different firm.
So is it always a 7% escalator every year? Or is that something new?
I don't know a lot of crisis for past years.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Well, probably due to COVID, the cost of product is very high now, too, of getting it, too.
So approving this tonight, we are, we're locking in for three years?
Four.
Four years?
Four years. Correct. I believe we could, we have...
But we would lock in?
This is an actual service agreement, so we could, you know, discuss that with them and include that in the service agreement. But this is surprising for the four years.
Right, so I don't want to, off one piece of paper, approve something, and then they come back next year and go, well, it's not 13 anymore, it's 15. So if we can get an agreement with them to lock into these prices, absolutely.
That's the goal.
Okay. So we're approving, making a motion to approve, getting a service agreement that we can then approve?
No.
If you're approving this proposal for, for proposal, that was, you know, submitted for the RFP, and then we would then engage in a service agreement with them, like any other...
Okay.
Contract, yeah. It has all the, you know, the legalities.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Member Peterson?
Yes, I believe for the finance manager, manager, we have done this in the past around the same cost, correct? Every year? Yeah. It's not...
Yeah.
Okay, that's all.
Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you, Alec.
We're welcoming to other people, but not...
Spongy moss.
Spongy moss. We don't want them in our community.
No spongies, and no gypsies.
There we go.
No gypsy.
That's me.
Next is a consideration...
I'm a gypsy. My grandpa was a gypsy, yes.
No comment. Next is consideration request to authorize administration to accept the local road improvement program grant with Oakland County, and authorize $47,529 out of the general fund to complete the city portion of the project. Alec?
So city staff applied for this grant this past spring. It's a grant that's awarded out of Oakland, Oakland County, for the purpose of improving economic development. So the street in question is Letica, in between Romeo and Parkdale. The county would be chipping in approximately $29,471, and the city would be contributing $47,529. In previous years, we've used these funds to resurface all the structures of Letica and Second Street. And so this road was chosen because it's kind of a major entrance point into the downtown area, and so it's a heavily trafficked, troubled road. And then tonight, we've also got our local superintendent, Jason Dickinson, to answer any questions too.
I'll start.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you. So really, maybe Jason could give a little bit more color in terms of how we selected this section of road, because this did not come to infrastructure. I mean, and, trust me, I want the grant money, I want to get the money, but I'm just not sure how we selected this section of road. You know, we normally review the list before it comes to council. You know, there's lots of places, I'm sure, in, in the city that need this, this work. Any other thoughts, Jason?
So working with the former, sorry. So working with the former manager, this road started out on Letica from Parkdale to OPC, then OPC to the Clinton River Trail, then the Clinton River Trail lot to Elizabeth, Second Street Bridge.
Yeah.
And then last year was Second Street Bridge to Main Street, which the DDA... And then last year was Second Street Bridge to Main Street, which the DDA participated in helping complete that whole section because the funds were lower at that time. So a few years ago, when we did Stony Point, that project brought, come out onto Letica and went to Romeo and to Kristin Moran. So this will be completing that entire section, so within a five-year cycle, we'll have that entire Letica road completed. So I, my understanding from Mr. Wing was that it has to impact the entire community somehow, so being that it's a major connector road, future considerations would be Romeo, Parkdale, Elizabeth, streets that people travel to get to downtown, exit, enter the city. Work with, maybe with the MDOT project and our Romeo realignment, that could be a future to finish Romeo up to Sycamore. So those are the kinds of reasonings that we came up with, finishing this section and moving to a new road and completing that.
So we could not use these funds for like a side street?
Exactly.
Like Terry, which, yes, that is where the mayor lives, but it is, to my opinion, one of the bumpiest streets we have.
Yeah, that, that was, that's exactly correct. So we, it had to have economic development impact, so it had to be a secondary feeder road, so we were kind of stuck, and Jason's right, the next one would be Romeo to the split all the way to Sycamore, because that all feeds in, so we couldn't use them for locals, because we would have much rather spent 47,000 on that, so.
And Mayor Protem, I agree with you on Terry Street.
I'm sure your neighbors let you know.
All the time. Councilmember Albrecht.
Jason, you mentioned, you, you took us through the history of Letica, then Letica from Romeo to Tinkin is that subdivision-
Okay, that was previously done 10 years or so?
Okay, so we're not gonna be, you're not gonna be coming back next year to finish that part?
No, no.
Okay, so this, in, in your mind, this would complete our focus on this major cut-through street, you know?
From essentially Krista, past Stony Point Boulevard, all the way to Main Street.
Okay.
And that would all be a five-year cycle.
Okay, thank you.
This, this kind of work gives you, you know, five, seven, 10 years to plan ahead for a bigger project.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Sage. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Next is consideration request from the fire department to replace the fire station furnaces.
Don't need them today.
Or tomorrow.
Or, does that include the air conditioning?
Well, one step, one step at a time.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a little bit of history, back in 1972, the fire station was a plastics plant. We moved there in 1992 off of the university. The furnaces are still the original from 1972. The furnaces are in an area between the ceiling and the attic area, and the, there's two furnaces that serve the office area. If you think about it, it's where the offices are and the kitchen. The parts become harder to go ahead and get. Those furnaces are 72% at best, as far as efficiency goes, and they've been on our radar to replace, in all honesty, for at least six or seven years. But we keep pushing them off because we could, we're continuing to get life out of them, and we wanted to be good stewards of the city's money like I know you want us to be. We're finally at the point to where keeping them running is becoming more difficult for the parts, so we have gotten quotes to go ahead and replace the furnaces. The plan is to go ahead and replace the two furnaces with one high-efficiency, 96% efficient. The furnace is of the newest technology, which means that there can be three different zones within those office areas with only one furnace. If one office needs additional heat, it will go ahead and the furnace will run, but the heat will only be directed to that office area, depending on the, on the windows and the, and the, and the walls and things. So our request is for council's consideration for, and I don't have the, the number right in front of me, but about $38,000. This will go ahead and take out the old furnaces, put in the new furnace, the zone controls, and to, with the zone controls, we're redoing some of the ductwork to make sure that they're efficient. Currently, the hot air comes down on the interior walls as opposed to the exterior walls of the fire station, which means, you know, constantly working on, trying to keep things balanced out. And with that, we're also putting in the, the most up-to-date thermostat so that we can keep in mind, and in the evening hours, when the firefighters might not be in that area, turn the heat or the air conditioning in the direction to go ahead and save money. So in front of you is this consideration to go ahead and move forward with the replacement of the furnace.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, it's 34,450, and Anthony's gonna explain in the memo, we talked about bond proceeds, but that was kind of before we knew where we were headed with the bond funding, so he's got alternative for that, so if you don't mind, if Anthony can bring us up to date on that.
Anthony?
Thank you. So one thing to keep in mind is kind of where, how did we get to where we're at? So years ago, council authorized a study to be done and inventory all the city buildings, facilities, grounds, and all that. That's the AMRESCO report. What we had always done prior was we had a lump sum of money for maintenance and repairs, and it was very much break-fix. It was, we had money, we knew, we always spent about the same amount every year, and when it broke, we fixed it. Through the study, we then got a plan in place, and they looked at everything, they said, well, the amount you're spending is right, but maybe the priority could be different. So how do you proactively spend some of those proceeds? So where we've kind of been coming at in the last year or so, and council may have remembered the goals and objectives, is we're trying to spin from break-fix to forward planning. The prior DPW director in the list for facilities, the furnaces were one of the items that, that was brought forward as, hey, AMRESCO report, these are some things that are identified as, as kind of the proactive next steps. So when we look at the budget, for instance, in the current year, we know the amount's right, we know that there's areas that it's just not necessarily in the right line for the right building. One example, City Hall here had 65,000 budgeted as, as part of that total breakout. Well, that 45 didn't necessarily need to, if you follow the AMRESCO report, need to be in City Hall, it needed to have 35 of that at the fire station for the furnaces. So we're continuing to, to kind of evolve and get away from break-fix and into proactive as we kind of hone in where that, where those dollars need to actually be allocated to, so that's one part. Second part in the request is, as Intermanager Banda said, that we have the bond proceeds that we know we have to spend by October. As this is one of the eligible expenses to use those funds, my, my request was, well, let's use the bond proceeds towards that, because we get to, we get to allocate it, use it out of those funds, and it, it doesn't hamper us in any way, because you're, you're gonna just not spend it out of the facilities fund, and, and that's a revolving fund. Council can move money in and out of that anytime they want, but as we work on that checklist of getting the rest of those bond proceeds spent, which we're gonna have a plan going to facilities as well, that's gonna have some more in infrastructure, we wanted to start that now ahead of time. So it doesn't hamper us, it doesn't lock us into anything, we can later on say, you know what, let's, for the project, take it out of the facilities fund, transfer that 35,000 back, okay, yeah, we, we can do that later, it doesn't, it doesn't harm us in any way. So there's kind of a brief summary, if that helps, give some background.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you, so, thank you, I've noticed that we've recently added to our descriptions the general ledger that we're looking to allocate from, so I appreciate that. But in this one, you referenced the, the bond fund and the ledger. What's the balance in that fund currently?
680,000.
Okay, that's the number I had in my mind, so that's good. I tried to look in my budget book ahead of time, couldn't find it, but that's the same number.
Yes.
And so thank you for giving the background, because in my mind with this, I was thinking, I know we're gonna be talking about it at facilities, that we have this 680,000, we need to have some discussion on it, which needs to come to council in terms of how do we allocate that, keeping in mind the timing of October. And so you also answered the question of why now, why doing this for the fire department now, because this is, is needed. I think that answers my questions, thank you.
I would also like to add, City Manager Banda charged us with taking a look at grants, and we will qualify for grant. Unfortunately, it's only $500 from consumers, but $500 is $500, so. Plus then, we're not sure what the savings total will be in return on investment because of going from a 70-some percent to a 96% efficiency is gonna make some change for us also.
So Anthony, we are taking this out of that bond money?
That's my request, yes, is to have this come out of the bond funds, correct.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Just had a question, Chief, you, you keep referring to furnaces, but in the proposal, it does say, "The estimate includes removal of the two ceiling-mounted old furnace and the installation of new furnace and air conditioning." So this, we're doing a furnace and an air conditioning unit?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's a combination HVAC, so air, heating and air.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
And so what we're doing is, is we're removing two separate systems, two furnaces, two air conditioning units, which are both pretty old, and we're replacing them with one heater, one air conditioning system, and, but it's on a zone control, which gives us the higher efficiencies and savings from an energy standpoint.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson. Support. Support by Councilmember Gould. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. And I think that this discussion that the facilities committee is going to have and then bring back to our committee is, you know, gonna be some-
Robust.
Well, it's gonna be, we're gonna have some decisions to make on how to do that, so I'm looking forward to that. When are, when are you guys meeting?
Like, is it, as we said, Alec, next week, I think? Facilities?
The doodle request?
Oh, the doodle, yeah, you guys have to fill in the doodle poll, yep. Facilities. Yeah, the doodle poll is out right now.
Okay. Soon.
Soon.
Okay. Next is a consideration of a poverty exemption policy revision.
Everybody gets to participate tonight.
If you wonder why this is working behind me, right there it is. Look who's coming up here, everybody's participating, it's awesome.
Marcy, welcome.
Thank you. So today, we're asking for general housekeeping on the hardship and poverty exemption form and policy within the city. As you know, Oakland County is our contracted assessor for the city of Rochester, and as part of that contract, equalization represents Rochester for the AMAR, which is the, the audit of minimum assessing requirements. So they had a meeting in Oakland County with the state last Wednesday, and they said that we needed to tidy up the policy and the resolution that accompanied it to remove disqualification statement that was in the original policy. So what we're asking for your consideration and approval is to, that we're taking out the, there was a particular wording in the, in the procedure, whereas the person that is asking for the exemption for hardship, if they owned real property differing from their principal residence, that that would automatically disqualify them from the hardship exemption. But that is not permissible by the state, that would be included, that real property would be included in their assets that are in the asset test, that's, that's in the procedure. So what we're asking is for the deletion and the acceptance of the deletion of that particular wording in the resolution and in the policy. So in your, in your packet today, you have the revised statement, and this will allow Rochester to, if we get this turned back into the state, to very likely have a pass on that, that first round of the AMAR. So that's our request for you today.
Good. Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, Marcy. Will this have a direct impact immediately on anyone in our community, and can we make them aware of it? If so?
We have received no hardship request for the July Board of Review, which is July 19th at 9:00 a.m., so, so far, we have no impact within our community. It's just a, a housekeeping policy correction for us.
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Councilmember Harrison.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Peterson. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Thank you, Marcy. Next is a report from the various boards and commission. First is a report from the Rochester Area Youth Assistance, RIAA. Councilmember Harrison.
Sorry, Mayor, I wasn't able to attend this meeting.
Okay. Next time. Next is a report from the historical commission, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things, we still have one year left in our Archives project, and one of the discussion items at the last historical commission meeting was potentially digitizing the historical plaque applications, which makes sense, we've been doing it since 1980. But that then begged another question. We're missing the original, the 1980 to 1990 application book, we're hoping it's here at City Hall.
Whoa. I'll take a look in the vault.
Okay, thank you.
But I haven't, I haven't seen such an animal, but wasn't looking either, so.
Thank you. Then the other question was, where is the soapbox derby car being stored right now?
It is being stored in, in a climate-controlled area that we own, so it's wrapped and hermetically sealed. It was sticking on a desk in the middle of the room, which wasn't a good thing.
Oh, yeah, that was cool.
Okay, thank you.
Next, a report from the Principal Shopping District, Councilmember Gould.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, we did meet on the first. We, this, Alec was introduced to the crew and, and welcomed. We discussed Rochester Pose, which is, we approved, we're going to be bringing that to council Thursday, October 6th from 7:00 to 9:00. For those of you who don't know, that's when the live mannequins are in the storefronts. Gonna be, this year's theme will be storybooks. Approximately 25 businesses will participate. Over 5,000 people came downtown for that, and that was really a great, great event. For those of you that haven't participated, I encourage you to do so. We talked a little bit about the conference that Christie and some of her crew went to on the National Conference for Main Streets in Richmond, Virginia, discussed some of the great things that she learned there. We did a quick review of some of the things that have been going on in town. The farmer's market, if you haven't been yet, which I think probably most of you have, has been enjoying absolutely great attendance. There's a bunch of new businesses, new dog treat place, new hot sauce place, all kinds of great stuff going on there. West Third, the Thursday night markets have kicked back off, there's about 25 vendors there. I stopped by there myself last week, I think it was. Deck art was another, a big success, it is wrapped up, I understand not everybody's picked up their decks yet, but I've seen some folks walking downtown with them as they're collecting them. We have about 55 vendors for Junk in the Trunk on June 18th, from 9:00 to 1:00. And the last thing I would mention is until the end of the month, the Rochester Unfiltered, that's where they handed out the little cameras and they take one pic out of every camera, those are all on display in the Downtown Collaboration Studio. And those will be up, like I said, until June 30th. Did I miss anything?
No, I'll just say that we, Alec went under fire here, he moved into his new apartment on Sunday, and we put him on a plane, because Christie had already had, paid for Jenna to go and was a co-speaker at the National Conference, and Jenna was heartbroken, she came down with COVID Saturday. And she was okay, but she couldn't go. So we said, Alec, what are you doing? He's like, ah, I'm unpacking a truck, how about get on a plane and go there? So he got a great taste, and those have been there before, it's inspiring. And he got a really good taste of it in Richmond, and Chris Johnson went, and Amber went, which is a great crew to go with. And I think it was a really good experience for him to understand small-town America and what it means to us to be a great American Main Street, so that was on the fly, and we appreciated him, what he did, so I don't even think he got to unpack the truck until he got back, so.
Happy's good.
No comment.
Alec, you join our team, you see the world, right? Immediately. Also, councilmember Gould?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Next is a report from the Older Persons Commission, Mayor Pro Tem Salvia.
Yes, so in your packet is the agenda from the June 2nd meeting. We are in the budget cycle, so starting to prepare the budget. It does focus on capital improvements to the facility, which are really important. Speaking of improvements to the facility, there's a new cardio weight and exercise room, they've been completely updated and finished. They just had the 5K run walk for Meals on Wheels, which raised at least $27,000. They also completed the used jewelry sale, which also made $28,000 in used jewelry. So really good fundraisers happening at the OPC. Renee Courtwright, the director, is very excited up that they are hosting at the OPC the Michigan Commission on Services for the Aging Listening Session on July 15th. So this is a statewide organization, that they're all going to be there at the OPC, seeing the great work and the great facility that we have here. So anyone is welcome to attend and listen, as well as to address the commission. Other upcoming events, the Classic Car and Muscle Car Show, July 30th, from 10:00 to 1:00. Top Chef Event, August 11th, and the Second Annual Oktoberfest is coming up September 15th. Oh, and I would be remiss in mentioning that the Summer Soiree is also happening in The Garden on June 23rd, it's a Friday, it's a Friday. So lots of events coming at the OPC, and also really the Rebranding Committee continues to meet, and so the Rebranding Committee will be making a recommendation to the board probably within the next 30 days on a new brand for the OPC.
That is exciting. Questions? Next we have a report from the Planning Commission, councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the first thing we talked about was current process that we've had. Normal practice was to set a public hearing prior to site plan approval, but it's not in the ordinance. So we discussed amending Section 27, Article 27, site plan approval, to simply codify what we already do in practice, to add requirements for a public hearing prior to any site plan approval. Second item we discussed was, when we approved the master plan, it contains some zoning district modifications, so we need to go through with McKenna and review these modifications to determine next steps and timing of how we actually implement this into the zoning code. That was to be, this started on the 16th, but I think we're rescheduling that for a July meeting, I would assume.
Yeah, COVID hit McKenna, too.
And the final thing we talked about was St. John's. Back last year in May of 2021, I think we approved a two-year extension on their portable classroom, so, which was also approved by the state. In fact, I think they even gave us an additional extension due to COVID, et cetera. The plan now is for them to come back to us this year, August, September, with a site plan for approval to be implemented into a permanent classroom facility by sometime in spring of 2023.
And I think we also just had Patrick now is going to be kind of handling, I believe, Nick, the
Patrick and Rose.
The Planning Commission and all the things that go on there. So again, welcome Patrick, and he came to the meeting, and is, I think one of the things he's working on is looking at the old master plan and the new master plan, and kind of making sure those marry together and things like that, so lots of things to work on. Next is a report from the Rochester Area Recreational Authority, Ra-Ra, councilmember Albert.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a very productive meeting. We had a representative from Yayo and Yayo, the audit firm who delivered our final audit results for the prior fiscal year, which is the calendar year. And he took us through a history of revenues, expenses, and that all-important fund balance, and glad to report that we put another $105,000 into our fund balance in 2021, bringing our fund balance to $644,000. We're required to have a 20% in our fund balance, we now have 36%. So that was great news. As I've reported each and every month, I use pre-COVID numbers of 2019 for registrations, and registrations through May of 2019 were 4,100 registrations, people using the facility. We are for 2022 at 4,646, or over 500 more than we were pre-COVID, so Ra-Ra is back. The executive director job was posted, and as, the posting closed as of Friday, but the updated numbers, we had gotten at our meeting last Wednesday, where 13 people had applied, so again, I'm on the HR committee along with two other Ra-Ra board members, and we will be working with the Rochester Hills HR Director, as we've done with any jobs there, to go through the resumes and set up in-person interviews. And last but not least, Colliers was handling the sale of our 480 building. We do have a buyer, we are in final negotiations with a purchase agreement for a pretty nice price that hopefully I'll be able to announce at our next meeting.
Very good. Next we receive a report from the City Beautiful Commission, councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to formally invite everyone to the ribbon cutting of the newest mural in Rochester on the former GBB Building in the municipal park. That's going to be June 20th at 4:00 p.m., so we have a lot of goodies to give away. We'll have our mayor there speaking, and Mr. Nick Banda, so please come and join us for that, we're really excited. We're also hosting a fundraiser July 23rd, it's a dog wash, so if you have a dirty dog, bring him down to get him clean. And we also nominated a good neighbor who we'll be recognizing at a future meeting in the near future. So I also was not there, just to qualify, so if there's anything that I missed, please let me know, Nick.
You're good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next we receive a receipt of the check register report, Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, we have three on 526, 62, and 66 are in your packet for your review.
Motion? Oh, you want to know?
Next we're on to public comment, any further public comment? Brian, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have one caller.
Okay, welcome.
Hello.
Ms. Turner?
Hi, Jane Turner.
Welcome.
I'm Parkdale.
All right, go ahead.
I would like to comment, but the phone number that you had on your program this morning for the minutes was wrong. It wasn't the 312 number, it was the six, whatever. Anyways, on the, why are you tearing up a perfectly good road on Letica between Parkdale and Romeo Road, when from Main Street on Romeo, it's disaster? I don't know about Terry, Mayor, but it's probably pretty bad, too. So I don't know why they're tearing up a perfectly good street. Plus, a mile or two north of you, or not a mile, a street north of you, Mayor, there was construction going on at a house for like, over a year, and that construction crew tore up the road. Why aren't they responsible for replacing it? And then, the project, I wrote down 4FA, I'm not sure what that is, if I had it right, but what is that?
Not sure what you're talking about.
Not sure, Nick, do you want to answer?
Yeah, I can.
A couple of those questions?
Sure, so on Romeo, it's a mill and fill, so it's not in that greatest shape, and that will finish it off, they mill it, they're not replacing the whole road like we did Ludlow and some of the other streets, so it's efficient way to, really to extend, like Mr. Dickinson said earlier, five to seven years on that project. Romeo at Main Street will get done with the project on North Main, so we wouldn't want to waste money on that. I'm not sure what four, what you meant by four, I'll go back to the other one. If a contractor rips up the road, we do an assessment before the road, before they start, they post a bond, if they tear up the road, we'd make them responsible. I know exactly what you're talking about, it was already really bad. They didn't help it at all, but not enough to ding them to, to replace it. And then I'm not sure what your last part, you said four something?
Well, towards the end of the meeting, there was something said about a, I wrote down 4FA project. It seemed to be about a, I'm thinking it's a school.
Nothing on the school tonight that I can think of.
Classrooms.
They call it a classroom?
Oh, I know what she meant, no, she meant St. John's, so Jane, that's, yeah, St. John's Lutheran came to the planning commission, Mr. Councilman Sage was referring to, that they had an extension that we had given them, they had to come back for yearly reports, so that was St. John's School, not the Rochester Public Schools, I got you.
Okay, then going back to why are we replacing a perfectly good road on Letica between Parkdale and Romeo?
Yeah, we're not tearing it up, we're just resurfacing it for the, you know, for the next five to seven years, so we're not tearing up anything.
Well, it sounds like you're going to grow, tear down about four inches and put new pavement on there.
Two, just two-inch mill and fill.
There's no potholes.
There's
We respectfully disagree. It's, the longitudinal, what our street superintendent was talking about, it has longitudinal cracks, when the water gets in there, it starts to heave, just a matter of time until it turns into a really bad road. So what you do in those cases is you extend the life of those by milling two inches down, putting a fresh cord on it, course on it, extends the life of the road. So it's under our PESER ratings, it was an opportunity to get grant money, and it was appropriate.
Okay, well, maybe the police department could do a speed control on there, because it's 25 miles per hour, and when I walk by there, they're going 35 or 40.
Okay. Anything else, Ms. Turner?
Oh, no, I think that's it for the day, you guys have a good evening.
Thank you, have a good evening. Next on to General Miscellaneous, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, I have five things, but they're short. We'll start with today was the kickoff meeting of something you're probably not going to be excited about, but the GLWA 96-inch water transmission main for 2.2 miles, that goes through a landfill, the Sportsman Club, down to Quinder, south of here. To get it out of the landfill and get it out of the Sportsman's Club, they have to take it off, off that path and relocate it. So if you have been down to see anything around Yates right now, that's kind of the first phase. Well, Yates is ending up being, replace the bridge, roundabout, second phase, replace, make a roundabout by DeQuinder and, I'm sorry, Avon and 23, second phase. In the middle of that, they will take that water main, make a detention pond where they sell the flowers down at the bottom of that hill, across from the bridge, that becomes a detention pond, then they'll slide a new 96-inch pressure water main through the, off the right-of-way, and then come all the way around the loop and tie it back in at 23. So they're going to do the pipes starting next fall. Today was the kickoff meeting, it was great, they brought GWA people, they, GLWA people, they brought their design team, their engineers, we had our whole staff, their police, fire, DPW, everybody in the room for a couple hours, and we went over timetable, V2 routes, this costs us nothing. Improving the crossover on DeQuinder, where we, the bike crossover, they're going to widen DeQuinder to three lanes there, plus the kickouts for the subdivisions, and we talked about staging and, and fire rescue, so we know, this is an 18-foot trench, I believe, and, 14-foot trench, right? Yep, and they, so the chief's part of the Oakland Technical Rescue Team, so they have to be aware of that, timing-wise, and so we have a great line of communication, they've got three really good project managers that are going to stay on top of this with us. So myself, while I'm here, and then we have our team going to make sure in every single progress meeting, every council meeting, you'll get something in the pack that explains it. We'll have a dedicated website, like we did for Ludlow, anybody can find out about it. It's a mess, and the end of it is kind of when we start North Main. So east-west is going to be a challenge at the end, but they're, they're doing, they're very aware of everything going around within three square miles, and they're trying to dial it all in to get it right. So they're putting a pass-through lane for the church, I'm sorry, for the school that Rochester Hills has on the east side of DeQuinder, I'm sorry, Macomb has on the east side of DeQuinder, and they're doing all those things. We couldn't stump that engineer, he really knew every little detail about what we're going to do for the bike path, because they have to rip up, when they tie in, they tie in just to the south of the bike path, so we're going to have to reroute the bike path into, on existing sidewalks, up the 24-mile, then back around, for like, six months. So we told them the passionate people are the walkers and the bikers, and you got to make sure we communicate with them, make it safe for everybody. So great kickoff meeting, more to come, we'll put a whole package together for you all to see. I'll probably stick this in your manager's report this week, so you can see what they're doing. So that was today. We started the advertisements, they're off the city manager position, I think they come back in like, July 11th, our last date, and we talked to the folks at GovHR, and so we don't have to wait, if we have a candidate that's totally qualified, you know they're going to meet the vetting process, we don't have to wait to interview them, so we have to wait till we get all of them, and then pick them. If we think they're worth it, we can start that process. So in order to start that, if you remember in the, in the presentation that Mr. Vitran made on the behalf of GovHR and himself, or Vitran Consulting, once all the applications come in, then he sorts them through and says, "These meet the requirements." But what he doesn't do is take that next step, we talked about, we got a discounted price for the search, so the next step would be, what criteria do we want, I'm going to say you want, in your next city manager? So James, we talked about, it was a, I think $135 an hour, and we're offering his services that he's going to send an email to each of you, you don't have to take it if you don't want, he would not be offended, but I would encourage everybody to spend a half an hour, an hour with James, to talk about what you think are the characters should be the next people. He knows our staff, we've talked to it, it's what you think is important. So we want this position, this, the transparency for the community, know what you're all looking for, and I think that'd be time well spent with him, and then he can compile all that, so when then, then when he's going through the applications, he can use that data to help wean this thing down to two or three people, hopefully, if, if they apply. And then we'll go to that next step, we don't need him in the interviews and stuff, he knew that, but I think to gather your thoughts in organized fashion, to help him make that decision on what, how he prioritizes the folks that apply, would be a great next step. So look forward to our email, if everybody's okay, after I talked to the mayor about it, we thought it would be a good idea. Fourth Street update, it's paved, now that, because we're a month ahead, actually five weeks ahead, we talked to Christie and the business folks, and the next and last, second to last step is cut a six-by-six pad, right, Jason, around the catch basins and put concrete. So you don't have to have the road closed to do that, we, you just kind of snoggy around them, so the road's going to stay open, we'll cut those pads, they have to cure, I think, seven days, snoggy, sorry, seven days to do that, and then they'll stripe it, and then we're good to go. And then we'll put the platforms back on Main, on Fourth Street, and have the market back, Thursday Night Markets back on Fourth Street.
What about dancing in the street, is that going to be back there?
It should be, yep, it's good, that was the key, it had to be all gone before that, so yes, that'll be right back where it normally is, so we're good, we're way ahead of schedule for that.
But the market is going to move?
From Third, I think, back to Fourth, because it was always on Fourth Street, and they'll put it back on Fourth Street, because it works better for everybody there. If you drove down Letica today, whoa, so they got 12 of the 27 trees in already, and yeah, it's very exciting, I'll be quiet, Mark, you can talk about that, okay. And then, oh, so I talked to the mayor, and instead of wasting a whole bunch of time, I'm going to write, I'm trying to get done for this Friday, I tried last Friday, to do an economic update, just so you can all see what I did at the planning commission, we talked about all the little projects that are going, Patrick and I talk, obviously, every day, and the next planning commission meeting has four new items coming in, from the Spartanian to Par, to whatever, I'm going to give you little updates on all those and just keep feeding it to you, so you're aware of what's going on in town without wasting a lot of time at a public meeting. Boom, that's it.
Madam Clerk?
Two items, Your Honor. First, ballots are being printed right now for the August 2 election, I expect delivery of those by the end of the week. That means next week we will be stuffing and mailing absentee ballots, so I'll use the news flash to let people know to expect them and start looking for them in their mailbox. And second, tomorrow, at chief's recommendation, we're going to be utilizing the emergency alert system for a message regarding the excessive heat that we're going to have on Wednesday, so look for that, it'll be a test and kind of a practice for us to make sure that we're working on using it properly.
Very good. Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Gould?
Nothing this evening, thanks.
Mayor Pro Tem Salvia?
Thank you, just a request for DPW. I noticed at, let me get my intersection correctly, at Pine and University, if you're going south on Pine, the tree branches are covering the pedestrian walk sign, so if we could just kind of do a, make sure we're trimmed up everywhere, because it's the time
the time of year when the branches have just grown. So appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Sage?
Just four things tonight, sir. I know. All right. I just wanted to bet that participation in the Memorial Day Parade, which was, I want to commend you, Councilman Albrecht, for your participation in organizing that. But I also didn't realize till after participating in that event that we had two disabled combat veterans that were on our fire truck. So I'd like to recognize firefighters Palmer and Weiss for their participation in that event. Secondly, I missed giving an update on the Paint Creek Trailway Commission, so I'd like to do so now. 60 days ago, the city and the trail received a $75,000 grant to satisfy the engineering project or assessment associated with Bridge 31.7. So part of that engineering study comes with an environmental assessment. So that's contained unless we also need a muscle survey. So the muscle survey is a little expensive. If we do need one, it will probably, we'd be back in front of council asking for $11,000 more dollars to complete that entire engineering project. So stay tuned on that. Do we keep a list of the road construction projects and timing on the city website? Do we post that? Again, please, I'm sorry. The road construction projects that we have planned here in town, do we post that on the city website as far as?
We had, when Siano was here, we did have it pretty much up to date. So we're trying to get everybody back in line here to do that. So we have, we have that point out. Know that it's been updated in the last couple of months, but I will make sure Megan and Holly figure that out.
Great, thank you. And then finally, I'd humbly request an excused absence for the May 23 city council meeting.
Support? Wish you my, Councilmember Albrecht?
Support.
Support by Mayor Protem Salvia. Mayor, Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yep.
Sage?
Yes. You're good, Councilmember Sage. Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes, touching on the Memorial Day Parade, I did want to thank the Sister City Committee. It was made up of fellow council members, Amanda Harrison and Doug Gould, who worked with myself, and the Rochester Hills City Council members, Teresa Mangioli, Dave Blair, and David Walker. Really, the Rochester Regional Chamber, which we contracted for, Maggie Bobbitts and her team were the ones that really made it happen. We had probably five or six meetings. Vito Pamplona was our general, literally and figuratively, and being the lead donor and gave a very stirring talk at the presentation. And just wanted to thank all the people that made it happen. Takes a village for something like this to happen, and it just blew my mind when I got there that day to just to see all the people together and how things were laid out. And, you know, we had about 20 entries or groups marching in the parade. I've told the story, and we went out and bought 300 little flags. And I remember we went by the senior facility and all the seniors, you know, we were giving the flags to little kids and families and everything else. And we went in front of the seniors, and a lot of the people were out there in their wheelchairs watching the parade go by. I just brought tears to my eyes because just their feeble hands, they just wanted a flag. You know, it was handing a flag to one, and the next person wanted a flag, and some of them had their hats from the Korean War and the Vietnam War. It just was, that made my, made my day, just, you know, seeing that. And we gave away, we were out of flags by the time we got to the, to the end of the parade route. We could have given out 500 flags that day. So again, thank you to everybody. It takes a village to, for something to happen, and we've raised enough money that we will be doing it again next year. So I wanted to say that. As Nick talked about, our lead forester and, you know, part of our tree committee, which is also made up of Mayor Protem Salvia and Councilmember Sage, along with Citizens Melissa Weiss and William Thomas. We had planned for these 27 trees along the west side of Letica, and Mayor Protem Salvia said, they're out! So I got in my car, took some pictures, as did Mayor Protem Salvia. And so, you know, by the end of the week, we'll have 27 trees to start a canopy on the west side of Letica. And again, having somebody like Nick, working with Sherman Oaks, there's six or seven different varieties of trees. So it's not just planting 27 of the same tree. So that's going to look very good. The music in the park starts this Thursday. The J.C.'s puts it on. This week's entertainment is dueling piano, starts at 7:30, so you can still go to the DDA Thursday Market and then, you know, buy some things there, some food, and go over to the park. And last but not least, the mayor mentioned, you know, Lucy Strand, her services will be Tuesday, June 28, beginning at 10 o'clock in the morning at St. John's Lutheran Church with visitation, and then the service will be at 11 o'clock. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson. Councilmember Harrison, sorry.
Thank you. I'd just like to echo Councilmember Albrecht's comments. So many people contributed to the Memorial Day Parade, but it was really led by Councilmember Albrecht. I felt inspired working with him and appreciate your efforts in making that parade a reality. I think that everything and everyone needs a champion, and this was really a cause that he picked up. I'd also like to mention that Authors in April, the nonprofit organization that brings four different authors to the Rochester Community Schools and to the library every April, is celebrating 40 years. So we are asking the DDA and other event organizers to consider storybooks for their events this coming year so that we can, as a community, all celebrate the 40 years of this really important program.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you. I really wanted to just thank the city clerk for making sure everything went very well for the Memorial Day Parade. It was great to have it back. Did have, and police and fire and everybody involved, I thought it was incredible. Not as well, not as well attended here in town as usual that we've had in the past. Some residents did think that we didn't let them know about it, so I don't know if maybe next year we can let, get it out sooner so they know to attend. Even locals in the area weren't, you know, didn't know it was actually happening, so.
You mean the event at the cemetery?
Correct, our cemetery, yes, correct. So, but no, it was awesome. And Sergeant Harper's daughter, that was very wonderful, wonderful time. Thank you.
Very good. Yeah, I would just, I would just like to echo some of those sentiments. I think our celebration in the cemetery went well. I mean, I think, you know, the change from not having to walk down to the Rochester Hills one, you know, something maybe we need to think about in the future. Lieutenant Harper, his daughter played, was fantastic. And Lieutenant Harper really kind of helped organize that on the site that day, so I appreciate his help. And appreciate the fire department and the police at both events participating in that. It really was a nice day, it was a great event. It was steaming hot, but we made it up the hill there, and it was a good event. So hopefully we'll do that as well into the future. And that's all I have tonight. So meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.